At this time, we'd like to call Mr. Jeff Luttrell, Wilson County Director. Three minutes.
Thank you, committee for me tonight, since I do just have three minutes. You watch the education committee, I focus mostly on the House amendment, or amendments that come out of the Senate. That's the Senate bill that we wrote. Tonight, I'll speak just on a amendment that failed yesterday, March eleventh, that amends the House version, which rewrites the bill. Please note, the first bill, the first language I say to this bill, this would go to study for a year and I'd be in full support of that happening. But the amendments have rewritten the bill. It is the scholarship program, voucher, whatever you want to call it. Just some, I'm gonna make some notes, just so, my purpose tonight is to let you know that when the local dollar gets stretched, I will be able to say that I told you, that I gave you the information. Just some language, this is not emotional, this is language that comes straight from the review committee, the fiscal memorandum of this. I'm just gonna read their language, because it's pretty good language. Because if a student leaves the LEA, then the LEA would not receive TSA funding attached to students, which would decrease the local revenue from the impact of LEA. Going down through that bill, you can see I've got plenty highlighted, but quote from them, from the committee, the revenue committee. The loss in TSA funding would not necessarily be offset by avoiding the cost of educating the student. Any offset or decreases in local expenditures would depend upon whether certain cost savings could be realized through staff reductions or service and resource reductions. The way I read that as director of schools, if I lose students and I lose funding, they're expecting me to offset that by reducing programs. That's where I would have to start. And that would get into many of our programs, so grab that, that you can fund it, because of what you're doing with your local dollar. Next statement, however, it is assumed that LEAs will maintain spending levels despite a decrease in student enrollment. The only way to do that would be for me to come to the funding body and say, I need more revenue. Then that would be up to the funding body, and you know how that is, are you gonna give me more sales tax? I doubt it, you've got other projects, roads, and those kind of things. Or are you gonna raise taxes on our local citizens? But they assume that we will do it. That's just some of the highlights that I see wrong with this bill. We'll not even get into it, I don't have time, I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you need to contact me. Each of these bills, first thing it says in this, in this memorandum. Increased state expenditures, three hundred ninety-seven million the first year, exceeds four hundred twenty-four million year three. And they state in their language, we've not looked past year three. Increased local revenues net impact will put two hundred forty-four million dollars in. But year three, it's hundred ninety-five million. And it just goes on and on, we're gonna lose revenue, they state it. And if we lose revenue, if we lose students, it impacts our students. And this system is based on student opportunities. And we provide a lot of things, thanks to what you've done with your local dollar, and I think it needs to be protected.
Frank Del Bosco, teacher, Wilson County Schools.
Hello, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. What I have to say, or questions I have to ask really more from our representatives. I have emailed you, and just wanna make sure that you have heard the concerns that I have about the voucher program. So my first concern is, as stated by the legislative session, or in the legislative session by Commissioner Reynolds, private schools and charter schools do not have to accept students who receive vouchers. Specifically, students who have IEDs, five oh fours. Also, students who maybe, maybe do not admission based on their race, gender, religion, or if they are a part of the LGBTQ plus community. How can you vote for legislation that uses state funds to discriminate against Tennesseans? That's my first concern. Secondly, public schools in Tennessee are held to high academic standards by our state, as they should be. Private schools, charter schools, and homeschool programs that would qualify to accept these state voucher funds are not held to the same assessment standard as public schools. Also, private school educators are not required to hold the same licensing credentials as public school educators. How does the Senate ensure, or the states, you can ensure that students using vouchers will receive a quality education? And how is this inequality compared to district schools, teachers, students, and students in public schools? Third concern that I have is Tennessean, and educators, that education will become a for-profit industry that does not represent the best interest of our students. I foresee the fly-by-night private educational institutions popping up all over the state of Tennessee to capitalize on the voucher program. And how will the state ensure the educational integrity of these institutions? And then lastly, if the state currently has the extra funds to support the voucher expansion, why are public schools currently underfunded? As a teacher, I see funding issues, and we'll be happy to expand on them if you would like. Especially in the areas of, you know, unfunded state mandates like RTI. And then also, you know, having funds to reduce, or have more teachers to reduce class sizes. I could go on, but.
Okay, so just so everyone knows why we're here tonight. We have some other bills to discuss, and we'll talk about another had-on meeting at that appropriate time for those. But tonight, we're only discussing school vouchers. We have a couple of our, we've got State Representative Clark here, Senator Mark O'Leary here, to talk to us about this. So tonight is only about the vouchers, that's really all we're gonna talk about, okay? At this time, I'd like to ask Mark O'Leary to come out and talk to us about.
I appreciate guys doing this for us, okay? We don't know what's gonna come out, there's multiple bills going at this moment. So I'm gonna only speak pretty much to the Senate, and I'll let Clark or Susan speak to what's happening in the House. When the voucher program was talked about, and that was by the governor, the end of last year, they said what he was telling us, and I was very public saying I was against what was being proposed. I went to the governor's house, we've actually sat and talked, and I've worked with his administration to see where it could get to, where we were. Some of the things that we've talked about is, if we're going to do it, we need to have a systematic way that we're gonna do it on a very small, this case is gonna be about two percent, to see if this works. I don't know if it will. The concerns that we talked, that we heard here tonight are real. I don't know if this is the best way to go or not. But I do know this, that it's our responsibility to look at all the students, all the kids in this county and this state, to say, what is it that we can do to ensure the best quality education possible? We've got one of the absolute best here in Wilson County. I'm telling you, we are one of the absolute best in Wilson County. But that doesn't mean it's like that across the state. If we're all like Wilson County, it'd be easy just to say no. But that's not true. There's students that are graduating top of their class with an ACT, the best student is fourteen. There's students that are graduating across that can't read the state. We've tried to give extra money in some of those systems, and it hasn't worked. We've tried multiple different ways. We've tried different school systems, we've tried many different ways to say, what can we do to make something work? This year alone, we just stopped one in Hamilton County, it wasn't working. We tried a couple of years, it wasn't working, we refunded it, moved it back. I don't have an answer for what's right. But I can tell you this, God gave parents the responsibility to raise kids. It's gonna be the parent's choice to say, what is the best avenue for that to educate those kids? Whether it be homeschool, whether it be in a private school, whether it be in a public school, that's a parent's choice. I am gonna be looking to say, where's the best outcomes, no matter where it is, for every dollar the state puts in, to how are those kids doing? Whether it be homeschool, whether it be private school, whether it be public school. I have responsibility that everybody across the state to say what happens. Sure, if there was extra money, we said, why not put it all in public school? But we took education, and if you notice that higher education didn't get extra money this year. Public schools did, K through twelve did, higher education didn't. So we were able to take some of that money that may have been allocated elsewhere, and say, we're gonna try it a different way right now. If we did, it would have gone to higher education. No, we took, the governor took some money, and said, we're gonna put it in a little bit of a pool to see what works. If it doesn't work, I'm gonna be the first one to say, we need to stop this and not do it. If it hurts Wilson County, I'll be the first one to say, we need to stop it, it's not working. But saying, we're gonna take two percent, two percent of the kids statewide, and not give it a shot, not give parents a choice, not empower the parents? I'm gonna imagine that they're gonna be saying, boy, we'd love to come to Wilson County. But in this bill, it's gonna say, Wilson County says, no, we don't want any more kids. All those classes are gonna be used for the future, we don't have to take it anymore. We don't, ours won't cover it. You're absolutely right, it won't. But I've got parents that come to me and say, if they would just have a little bit, a little bit of help. They don't need to pay for the whole thing, but they could use it for something. We've heard accountability. Every single student that takes this money is gonna be responsible that they take the test. If it goes to a private school, and the private school decides to take it, then they're gonna be responsible to make sure that student takes that test. If it's a homeschool co-op, and they take the money, that student and that homeschool co-op will have to take the test. We need to know what's working and what's not. I wish I could say it's not gonna go to some schools. I would agree with some of the schools that are out there. But I can't have that, it's either open or it's not. I'm gonna tell you, I think we've got one of the best superintendents right here, and he and I have talked numerous times. And I gotta tell you, some of the points he has are absolutely right. He showed me one, he went on the internet and he said, Mark, look at this, tore me up. I didn't like it, I didn't like the curriculum, I didn't like the school. I wish there was a way I could have shut the school down. But I couldn't. I'd better say, it's gonna be up to a parent. And I'm gonna empower the parents the best I can to say, take this responsibility, choose the best educational path for your child, and hang with it and do it. But if this doesn't work with two percent, we need to cut it and not expand it. But I'm also gonna tell you this, if this two percent excels, if it does better, and if we have better outcomes, I'm gonna be saying we should expand it. I'm gonna be saying, if it works and those kids are doing better, I wanna know it, and I wanna do what's best for our kids in the future. But I'm here to answer any questions you all might have as well. Or I can let the representatives come to share a little bit about the House bill.
I do have a question for you, Mr. Luttrell. This two percent you speak of, is that any two percent? We're gonna take anybody that wants to go to these private schools?
So there's twenty thousand, and ten thousand of those are gonna be for those that are three hundred percent above the, below the problem, or above the problem. So the first ten thousand are gonna go there, the other ten thousand are gonna be kind of a first come, first served.
But unlike the public schools, like if a child comes to us, we have to take them.
Yes, that's correct.
So if we're going to a private school with this voucher, we can take two. Is that correct?
So if you have somebody coming from another county, coming here to your public school, and you have room for them, and you say you have room.
But what I'm, we're getting on private. Private, if I take my kid who is autistic, and I want him to go there or she, you gonna take her, do you have to take her?
You do not. The private schools will have their own enrollment, and we're not changing that enrollment. They have the choice to take who they want, they can say yes or no.
So I've got a kid, I'm gonna set her, she's athletic, softball. I've got a kid who's average in softball. And I'm gonna take her over to Friendship Christian. Average grades, you have to take her?
That's gonna be up to that private school to determine, we are not putting criteria.
But if she throws about seventy-five, and can move the ball, they're gonna take her.
Okay, and you're, that could very well be.
Ah, guaranteed. Yes, absolutely, MJC can take her tomorrow, wouldn't it up? So I, I just wanna throw that out there, thank you for having me.
Okay.
Now, he's talking about a sports, but if you're really gonna test them for academics, correct?
That's correct.
That is the gauge, correct?
That's correct.
So if you have these students that go there, and they don't do better, then that's the gauge, not if they fill all the baskets.
That, that's correct. Are there any people in schools that are gonna think of ending it? Absolutely, I mean, is somebody gonna gain the system? Absolutely. Yes, so I agree, this is not a perfect bill, absolutely agree. But overall, am I trying to help our students across this state? Yes, if everything was like in Wilson County, I'd be voting no on this bill. But we're not, we are not.
We hadn't talked much, I don't see it listed anywhere about homeschool, or any of our homeschool co-op. Are they included in this, are they included in this bill?
Yes, so if it's a homeschool co-op, it would be included. So that homeschool co-op, if that student took the money, they would be responsible for that test.
What about just the homeschool, you got a homeschool?
If you're not in a co-op of some sort, you are not engaged.
Question, Mr. O'Leary?
We get, let's, audience question.
It's up to you, but now, you asked for public comment, and nobody signed up.
Exactly. Now, I don't have a problem with them asking questions, why is Senator O'Leary didn't have?
But recall here, the purpose of this meeting is whether or not you're gonna support the resolution that's coming out. So ultimately, you're gonna take a load on that, essentially. How you get there is up to you.
One question, Mr. O'Leary. So you had mentioned that you're doing a test, and then if that test fails, you're gonna be one of the first that is going to ask to withdraw. How long is this test phase? And second part to that, let's say it's three years, and a child goes to a private school, say they go to Friendship Christian, and during their senior year, you drop funding. Would that child then have to go back to public schools?
So if we drop funding?
If they were not able to pay for it?
They would have to, yes. That's a great question. This is not a perfect system, I'm telling you, this is not a perfect bill. No matter which one we look at, in the House or the Senate, it's not perfect. We could debate, we could work on this for years, and still not have a perfect system. There's always gonna be somebody that's gonna try and scan the system, there's always going to be.
Mayor, I'm gonna make a comment. Hey, on the questions out in the audience, we're gonna respect their time, Mr. O'Leary, Ms. Lynn, Mr. Clark, Mr. Boy. Sorry about that. We're gonna let them all speak before we ever take any questions from the audience. I hope you understand that, but they are on limited time, and we're grateful to have them here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boy.
But Clark has family in town, so let's send him to us.
Normally ladies go first, but Chairman and committee, it's great to be with you today, appreciated. Now, now, unlike Senator O'Leary, I probably may not, won't be as well-versed on this. And we're divided up, as y'all know, into committees, and they're kinda like subjects. And I was talking to Chairman, or Chair Lady, Janie. Yesterday morning, and she was telling me a lot about the bill, and I learned a lot from talking to her. But I told her, I said, I said, Janie, I am absolutely, our legislative day is packed in fifteen and twenty increments. And I, today, I've had nothing but funeral homes, funeral directors, internet companies, and just everything you can imagine, hospitals and doctors on various bills, not once have I talked to anyone about this today. Now, I did get some information to come in here in Brave Yaw, and we'll take a few questions. But I am so happy to see Ms. Lynn come in, because she's, she knows a lot more than I do about it. But, but I will tell you this, we get a lot, a lot of emails, and a lot of just questions from people in passing. And the question usually is, are you for vouchers? Are you, are you good with vouchers, do you dislike vouchers? And guys, that's a, that's a, that's a big question. It's like asking somebody, do you like, do you like Medicaid? Do you like Ten Care? It depends on how you frame the question, you need to hear the rest of it. I mean, if your question is, do I want, do I want Medicaid for all and take away everyone's private health insurance? No, I'm not for that. If you're asking, do I think the poor people that need assistance, should they have Medicaid? Yeah, absolutely they should. And with vouchers, that's kind of the same thing. Vouchers is something that comes up a lot when you're talking about school choice. Now, school choice is a big tent. In that tent, most people think of vouchers, and there are people on one extreme of that, that their view of school choice is that lottie-dottie, everybody gets a voucher. You could be a Tennessee Titan, you get the voucher to go do, you know, seven thousand dollars to go to Pope John Paul. You could be, everyone out of Friendship should get a voucher, or, or, you know, there's all different varieties of that. But on the other end of that tent, you have people, Jeff Luttrell would never say he's for school choice, but I would suggest that there are people that have the same view as Jeff Luttrell, and their view of school choice is that you can go to a non-zone school within your LAA. And then in between, you have everything like charter schools, you have education savings camps, you have a lot of different varieties. And so where I fall on this issue is that, it's kind of similar to Senator O'Leary, when the governor first proposed his bill this year that was pretty much universal vouchers, I said, that's not something that I'm comfortable with. I, and I could explain to y'all, I don't think I have to give y'all an explanation on it, but that is terribly expensive. There's a hundred thousand students in this state that are already in private schools, we'd never pay for their education. They're, they're not asking for it, nor do they need it. If we all of a sudden decided we were gonna budget for that, that would be about seven hundred million dollars of new money coming in. Not only that, it would create inflation in the private school market. And if a kid finally did get the opportunity to go there, their seven would mean nothing, they'd probably need fourteen to accomplish the same thing. So I've always said that was a bad idea, and in fact, it actually got me kind of sideways with some of the voucher people, because in their opinion, when I said I was for school choice, they thought that was a blank check to go wherever they wanted with it. Where I have landed on the issue, and every time that I have ever talked about school choice, it has been to get children that don't have choices. And I know that Wilson County, we have great schools, Levina Special, wonderful schools. I would doubt if anybody here would do anything other than take the public option, because it's so rich in Wilson County. But there are students in other parts of the state that are in a failing school. Now, I've gotta remind y'all, it wasn't too long ago that the city of Memphis just folded up and shut down their schools one day, and handed them to Shelby County and walked away from it. Those are the type of schools that sometimes fail students. And there are parents that will come to the legislature and cry in our offices and say, my kid can't learn. He's, he's trying to be recruited into gangs, his teacher doesn't care, he wants a different choice. And a seven thousand dollar voucher for that child, who may be able to go to a private school, but actually does cost seven thousand dollars in Memphis, that means the world to him. And I've gotta emphasize to, to the school board, and I told Jeff, now Jeff calls me sometimes at night in my locker, she'll say, get y'all away and go to bed now, you know, and, and take him off speakerphone, Clark, and talk to him. And we have a lot of heated conversations. But I told Jeff, I told Larry, I told Janie, I said, y'all should be against vouchers. My goodness, y'all are the Wilson County School Board, of course you should. But I said, you gotta understand, we represent everybody. I represent Wilson County school students and parents, Levina Special. I represent kids that go to Mount Juliet Christian, Friendship Christian, I represent homeschoolers, I represent people that can't have children. I represent people that have moved here from Illinois, and their kids live in another state, and they couldn't care less. We have to take everyone into consideration when we do this. I'm not on a school board, I'm here representing all of my constituents in the forty-sixth district. And so those students, I lost my train of thought, I forgot. But, but we, we have to make choices that are good for those students, and we wanna give them all the options that they can. And I heard, I heard people ask the question, they say, how can they afford anything for seven thousand dollars? Isn't that a choice that their parents should have, though? And so if they can't afford to go somewhere, and they want more options, I'm always for giving parents more options. Now, like we said, we think in Wilson County, it's unlikely that they would choose anything other than Wilson County schools. But in the rest of the state, that may be something that they need. And so I'm, I'm for giving that a try. Now, the House of Representatives has a totally different version. And I heard a story one time, Bill Dunn, who used to be a legislator with us, he told this, he said, I don't think it really happened, I think it's one of those stories that almost started, you know, two people walked into a bar. But, but he says, you know, there's a lady now that had a sign that said, no vouchers, no vouchers ever. And he said, would you be for a bill, he said, I know you're against vouchers, would you be for a bill if it raised state funding to about sixteen billion dollars? Counties didn't have to pay anything, we put all the teachers on, on state health insurance, you know, we started to pay at seventy thousand a year, and we, and just went on and on with the whole laundry list of things. And said, but we also gave some scholarships to some kids in poverty level, so they could go to a different school, including private. She said, well, yeah, yeah, I guess I'd be for that. He said, well, congratulations, you're for vouchers, you know. And so there's, and the, the moral of that is, is it really depends on what's in it. In the House of Representatives, I, I believe, they're probably not as in favor as the Senate and the governor are of doing school choice, or doing what some people would call vouchers. And so our version, it, it does a lot of things. And the reason that I'm interested in the House version, where I'm not really interested in what the governor's proposing, is because we address a lot of things that my teachers have been asking for for a long time. I've had teachers come over the summer and sit in my office and say, Clark, why don't we take the TCAT? The T of ready stuff, when it doesn't really, it doesn't test, why can't we do, if we wanted to do one on the ACT, why can't we do the ASPIR suite of testing? And I said, well, I don't know, why, why can't we? And we, I think it's safe to say now that most of us are recognized, and there are some issues with third and fourth grade retention laws that come in. And a lot of people are saying something needs to be done, and that's something else that our bill addresses. It also recognizes something that Jeff Luttrell was setting me on, told me on several occasions, and that is, he says, Clark, we test all year long. He said, our teachers are no longer teaching like curriculum, they're no longer teaching for the kids to learn, they're teaching for them to pass the test, why can't we just do the federal testing to be done with? Our bill does that. Our bill also recognizes, and I actually represent three counties, two districts, two in Wilson County. And to see teachers getting paid the same, but switch LEAs, because at one place, maybe they're providing the benefits for the whole family, one place it's eight hundred dollars a month, and the other it's three hundred. It varies so much from, from one LEA to another. And so our bill makes it more consistent, the state will either bring them in as state employees and put them on the state group plan, the state employees have, that's cost a lot less, or we will give money to the LEA to buy the cost down for the, for the teacher. So when you're looking at four or five things that our educators have been asking for, that, that they would be disappointed if I voted against, and when I tell them about it, they're like, yes, please pass that. And then it also includes some, some scholarships for lower-income students. Guys, to me, that's compromised. And, and when you find yourself in a situation where the voucher people are mad at you, because you're not all in with them, but then the public educator sometimes wish, don't think you're all in with them, and you're meeting somewhere in the middle, I think that's probably a pretty good compromise. And I think the House bill, there's something in it for, for both sides. And I think it's changing day to day, that's why I'm reluctant to tell you exactly where I'm gonna fall on it, because for the same reason that I, early on, told someone I was for school choice, and then nearly got in a fight with a voucher guy, because he, because I told him I wasn't for the governor's bill. I'm not gonna opine on this until I see the version that makes it to a committee that I'm on. And I don't serve on any education committee, so it will be financed before I get a chance to really scrutinize it. And that, I just want y'all to know, that is mainly because I don't have a spare moment of time in my day, because I'm scrutinizing my, my legislative package, the bills come through my committee, the bills that are gonna- Because I'm scrutinizing my, my legislative package, the bills come through my committee, the bills that are gonna be handed to me that day. And if I get a chance to watch anything regarding this, it's on the weekend or late at night with my laptop laying in bed. And I, I sometimes, my wife doesn't like to hear committee meetings in, in bed, so, so I sometimes don't, don't run that. But I want you to know that, that this will be coming to me and I will, at some point, have to make a decision on it. But I don't have a lot more details other than that. I will take any questions, but the real brainiac is, uh, the lady over here from, from Mount Juliet.
Say the best for life.
Yeah.
That's funny.
The question I have is this, I'm gonna hammer this all night. Are you going to, or are these vouchers, or is any school, if Ken comes up with it, is any school going to take that?
No. If, well, if, now, someone mentioned a minute ago, and I meant to ask you that, because I get Charles E. Morris on the time, by the way. And one of the things, I don't, I don't have any charter schools in my district, so I don't, I really shouldn't care. I hate to get between somebody that wants to pound on somebody and, and that, that person. But charter schools actually do take children with special needs. They don't ask them for LGBT, they're public schools, it would be legal for them to do that. I, I say that because I've toured them before. And I, I have the same thing. My degree is in, is in education kindergarten through eighth grade. So I was raised in a world where we didn't like chartered and we didn't like private schools. And I went and toured one, one time to see what it's about and learned that it's actually just a public school. And, and it's, it's no different really than, than anything else. And so, um, the charter schools, which, which actually, you don't have to have a voucher to go to, they wouldn't have to take anyone that Wilson County schools takes. Um, as far as a private school, it, it would depend on the affiliation of the school. Um, you know, there are schools in Nashville that cater specifically to children with special needs. That's one of the special need education savings program programs started some time ago and it's had some success, hasn't been used as much. So there are some that would take them, there are some that probably wouldn't. Um, and so it would vary school to school.
But my question is, if you're a private school, are you going to take anybody that applies? With this stuff?
Oh, I don't know, that would be a policy.
I, I don't care about that. I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't, but what you mentioned earlier, uh, LDL, whatever. But are you going to take them regardless of?
It's up to that board's policy, yeah.
So we're not on, we're not on a leveling playing field, is what you're saying.
No, no, I, and I'll go on record, if anybody thinks that I'm somehow applying to private schools, well, well, no, they're, they're not. And, and it's, it's interesting you pointed that out, because my wife is a teacher at, at Friendship. And she actually told me, she said, Clark, I think, she said, a, a lot of people like the idea of this, but she, I think you have a lot of people that are really disappointed because they think they're gonna get a voucher because of this friendship. So she said, we only have capacity for about twenty-five more students and we're full. I don't know that that's accurate, but she, she said, there's not a lot of room in, in schools. I don't even know where they would go, but, but, um, and I just wanted to throw that out there.
But if you ask, okay, let's, let's start this, let's say you've got twenty-five, you've got room for twenty-five students. They score a fourteen on their ACT, you know, fair.
I don't, I don't, I don't know the policy.
I do know, yeah.
Yeah.
But that, so we're not on, we're not.
No, they're not. And listen, if we can keep doing this if you want to, and I can answer your phrase the same way. Yeah.
I, I would be able to say that, I'm just saying.
Now, how can I say their picture in the face? I'm sorry.
That's right, you're, you're exactly right.
No, I'm kidding, but.
I think you're running four one four, we're gonna take them, yes.
I, I don't know, that's probably.
And that's the problem, I, I mean, we're, we're not on an even playing field. If you're really worried about education, the kid brings a voucher, you wanna educate this kid, you're gonna take him. End of story. Right? I mean, if you're really worried about.
Am I the legislator now or is?
No, you're, you're, you're the teacher right now. So if you really wanna teach this kid, they made a fourteen on their ACT. Are you gonna coach them up? You gonna teach them up? And take that voucher? Or are you gonna leave them in public school because we only got plenty of spots?
Well, I don't know, what GPA does this student have and what grade?
We don't know.
Very stuff on that.
We know the student is struggling because they are economically behind them, right? So we're gonna pull them over here, they wanna be educated, right? They want to be, their parents want them to be, they want them to get out of the gang system and all that stuff you talked about earlier. So we're gonna pull them over here, we're gonna take that voucher? Hey, we're gonna take a chance on this kid?
I don't, if they might, you know, they.
That's the question, that's what I'm asking.
That's, that's, I don't, I don't.
That isn't, still, we're not just saying, it's not up to us in public education, we have to take them. See what I'm saying? That, and again, I'm not.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I want y'all to know, this is not a them versus us. This is give the parents the choice. And I'm not here to sell you on this.
This is a, to me, it's a thing about educate them all. Regardless. And if we're gonna give vouchers, and, and we're gonna accept vouchers, we're a private school? Hey, little Johnny over here's got, he, he's not scoring real well. We think he will thr- thrive in your private school. Are you going to take the voucher? That's the thing I'm asking. We don't know the answer, like you said.
Right.
I think we do, but we're not going to go without them. Okay? That's all the questions I got.
Does anyone else have a question that's not that question?
First of all, they can't take them, they don't have the capacity to take them, we, we know, we only have two private schools in, in our county, right?
I had twenty-five state, but that's what, I was asking about number twenty-four.
But that'll be, their policies as like it is now, that don't change, the public schools still have the same right to do what they wanna do. And they should have, yeah, I agree with that, but, but we're right, we're, it would be selective. But that would be their right to do that as is now, if I understand.
I try again. Yeah. But I think the difference is, with the vouchers is, it's all the taxpayers paying for that money. And so us as Wilson County taxpayers, in private schools, being able to choose who attends their school. Where with Wilson County schools, we're gonna take every child regardless. And we're gonna do our best as, as best we can. And I do wanna add something, I, and, and I, I've thought of this before, uh, over the years and, and, uh, and this has, this has, there's been two different occasions. There was the, the special needs, uh, voucher program that was created before I came into the general assembly. Um, and everybody was afraid that it would be the demise of public schools. And then a few years ago, we, we had the program that allowed, uh, students in failing schools below a certain income level to get an education savings account in the larger school systems. And again, it was, everyone thought it was gonna be the demise of, of public schools. And there was a lot of pushback when Intesa came out, it was a different funding model that would be done for the people and said, that's essentially a voucher. And it's gonna be the end of, and, and listen, I mean, it, it wasn't the end of public schools, I mean, the funding went up. I mean, Susan Lynn gave me this, uh, this, uh, I mean, it went up from ninety-seven million to a hundred and twenty-three million in one year. And so it was pretty substantial. And over the years, I'm certain that the first time that someone said a veteran doesn't have to drive to Murkensburg to go to the VA and we're gonna let him go to a local doctor. People probably thought that that was somehow, you were trying to end, really those employees at the, at the VA hospital or, or, when in fact, to most people, they saw it as just better access. And the funding continued to go up in, in the VA. We do that with a lot of things, more options and greater access is not a bad thing. And I will tell you, and I've said this the first time this came up this year, when I only felt sociably what it did. Um, I said, guys, philosophically, I want, I wanna give the parents more options, more choices. Um, that's what they're asking for. Uh, if we can do that and we can give our teachers more, this is the, by far, I think, one across the country, the House of Representatives version is probably the most pro-public school, school choice bill that there is ever. And there's actually a guy that, uh, down there at the legislature, and he told me, he was a no last time we voted on education savings count. He likes it. And he said, because usually when a voucher program comes somewhere, they're, they're trying to shove it down people's throats. And there's, you're not getting anything that you're asking for. He said, this is giving our public education a question, about five or six things that they've been asking for in tandem and reducing, uh, the, the voucher to, to a income cap instead of giving one. So I think this is a, what they call a win-win thing, win-win bill, and it's not made it to a committee that I'm on yet. And it may change drastically tomorrow, almost every day it gets amended, it looks different. So I can't tell you yet exactly where I'm gonna fall on it. Uh, but, but I, conceptually, philosophically, I like the idea of, of, you know, parents and students to focus. And I know, uh, Representative Lynn is, is willing to talk to y'all, so if y'all have, you know, it's just me, what this lady can talk to you. And I'll hang around a little bit in case y'all have some, some group questions. But I do have family, they brought their kids back from spring break. I need to go see them.
I remember why she comes up. I, I get that following.
Hey, that's, that's. That's a story.
I've got another thought before, uh, for Miss Lynn. Uh, one thing, I think there are a lot of positives to this bill. I, I like the fact of parents having the option to send their child. I like the fact that teachers could possibly go on state benefits. Uh, I definitely like the fact that we're gonna cut down, that they wanna cut down some of the testing. There's one thing that we haven't discussed yet that I think is gonna be very problematic, all right? Unfortunately, in the last three years, this country has, uh, learned to deal with massive inflation. Not only in the country, but in the state, in Tennessee here in the county. Once kids and parents start lining up with these private schools and co-ops, uh, my sister runs a co-op here in town. Just they can't stop them from going up on their tuition. So these vouchers may be null and void, once these private schools and co-ops go up. And they're going to. We can't, we can't tell them what they, what they're, they have to charge and they're gonna go.
Jeremy, with this House bill, I like a lot of the stuff that helps our teachers. And, and to me, I think that our legislature sees a benefit in helping our teachers. Why do we have to attach that to that?
I'd like to have some of these things and make them their own bill.
And so that's a great, that's a great question. And, and the fact that Jamie asked me yesterday, asked me that question, she said, are y'all trying to, to buy into all of it? And I said, no, I, I think we're trying to buy the governor off, because he's, they're not gonna go for any of this stuff. I mean, it's, none of these things are gonna happen. But there's, there's an appetite in the House of Sandra Poee, we, we've had some meetings over some of these things, uh, specifically with eleven is special. But it's, I, I just don't think it'll, I don't think it'll go anywhere and the, uh, the governor will never go for it. But if he has to give these in order to, to do this, it may be our chance to get some good stuff from him, so that's.
Since you couldn't get a bill, Representative Boyd. I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Why does the state require twenty-seven tests? And the federal government requires six tests?
Well, we're hoping to change that in the bill. Uh, that's, that's one of the things we're doing, it's dropping the standard, yeah.
I, I just wonder.
I didn't know that was a thing, you know, Mr. Luttrell pointed that out to me this year. And I, I can ask, and I don't think that our, that my liaison to the Department of Ed wasn't aware of that, or he, he downplayed it, but we shed some light on it. And I'm not, I'm not too sure that it wasn't that conversation that prompted them to, to really dig into it.
Honestly, being a public education case myself, we test his kids.
We did. And this would give three hundred more hours of, of, uh, of, of curriculum time.
Let me ask you, you, you run your own business, Greg?
Yes, sir.
You, you're an education, you run a branch?
Uh, yes, sir.
Would you rather have the student that busts his tail or her tail every day in the classroom? Making that four point oh, three point eight, whatever? Than somebody that tests well and gets lucky and lays a ten? I've always wondered that as a business owner.
Yeah, so, and it's funny, you, you say this, because my wife, I'm the opposite. She's a terrible test taker, but cum laude, I had the thing that you wear when you graduate. And I was the opposite, I'm a terrible student, but I can take a test that I don't know anything about and do well and, and, uh, and I ended up.
Boss. That's why you're boss.
Yeah, and, and, uh, and so, uh, I would rather have a good student, uh, and I'm made of one.
Absolutely.
And I'll handle that, yeah.
Thank you.
That's funny, that's funny. All right, before I come off, I have to know, did Mark Poee give you one of his, uh, hellos?
No.
No!
That's a big hello.
I've been working on my black handspring, because I wanna outdo him, but I'm not gonna do that tonight. Okay. So anyway. I know it's very close, I mean. I, I did, I did make these for y'all, there's three here, listen, three here. But I hate giving out stuff that doesn't know why you're not gonna look at it. When I'm talking, so this is, this is the budget fact book and this is available online. Um, and I, I did make this, sir.
You didn't give me one.
What's that?
You didn't give me one.
Oh, they're supposed to pass it to you. Come on, share. It's supposed to pass it, pass it, take one, pass it down, like we do in school. Um, but anyway, uh, so let me, I tend to stay really neutral. I tend to get, not get emotionally involved. My husband says to me all the time, you're like a man, you just don't get emotionally involved. Um, and I, I don't, I wanna stay, um, very open to all sides of the conversation, uh, for the entire time. Because I always feel I can learn something from somebody every single day. And I feel like you can learn something from every single person you talk to every single day. So I just stay really open, I like the facts, I like the numbers, that's what I do for a living, I'm company controller for a company in Mount Juliet. And we have seventy-two companies, but forty-eight of our companies are wash and roll, car washes. So if y'all go to the wash and roll, um, I'm their company controller. But anyway, I put together these numbers and, um, the top numbers in that chart up there are, um, from our budget fact book. And, and a series of our budget fact books for the state of Tennessee. What the budget fact book is, every year when we vote on the state budget, the, the finance committee creates the budget and then the House of Senate vote on it. Uh, when, uh, we all go home, uh, the, uh, budget office puts together the budget fact book. And this is what we voted on to approve. And it just so happens, coincidentally, which is very convenient, right in the middle where the staple is, is the education budget. So right where that staple is, so that's very convenient. Um, but if I can direct your attention to, um, the charts that I made, the first chart on top shows education funding. And you see it went way up in twenty twenty-two, that was a lot of the federal COVID money. Um, and then, you know, it came down a little and it's gone back up in twenty twenty, uh, core budget. We provided a lot more dollars. Um, and then I have it compared to the EFA. And you can see the EFA, the total budget for education this year is nine billion sixty-nine dollars. And the EFA is one hundred and forty-one million. It is a little blip. There's no way that is going to consume that. So I hope we can take that argument off the table for now, um, because that really isn't, um, a possibility if this bill passes, yeah. Well, next year's budget for education will be even bigger than the nine billion sixty million dollars. It'll be, um, well, if this bill passes, it'll be over nine and a half billion dollars for education if this bill passes. Um, the other numbers below are, are basically taken from Wilson County's budget and went online. And y'all have a wonderful, uh, budget director, that page with all the budget information on it is fantastic. And I just went through your documents, it was very easy to lay this all out for you. So this is just for you guys to keep. Um, I would love for you to peruse the budget fact book, um, sometime. Clark's on the finance committee too, I think you want that too. There you go. Um, Clark's on the finance committee too, and like I said, this is what we voted on. Also in the front of the budget fact book, there's a lot of statistics, um, that are very interesting and very helpful for the people of Tennessee. So if I can just go over this bill, um, with you, I have all the details on it. And I just want you to know, the House bill has become a Christmas tree. It is like what they do in Washington DC where they hang everything in the bill to try to get everybody to vote for it. And I am not a big fan of that. Um, also, you know, I'm really proud of the Tennessee, state of Tennessee's fiscal position. We have the best bond rating you can have. Um, that means we have to borrow money, we borrow at the lowest rate possible. If, if we, if we ask the citizens of the state of Tennessee to help us pay off our state debt, it'd only be about three hundred bucks a person. That's, that's very low debt, very low debt, we're very, very proud of that. Um, we have been rated, you know, number one state for fiscal stability, um, about three years in a row by US News and World Report. So I, I am very proud of that. Last year, when we passed the budget, um, I mean, it was huge. I was shocked, um, that the governor really wanted to, um, go that far. Because we pass our budget based on estimates, not current collections. So estimating, looking into the future, but it was huge, huge. Um, but luckily, what we did decide to do was we funded two, um, point four billion dollars worth of non-recurring expenses with recurring dollars. So that gives us a huge push-in because our economy has taken a downturn. Now, here in Wilson County, your tax revenues are still coming in very nicely, same in Mount Juliet, coming in very nicely. You know, they opened the BJ's in December and all of that, very nicely. You know, they opened the BJ's in December and all of that, very nicely. But across the state of Tennessee, the economy has slowed down, and, uh, last month alone, we were ninety-four million dollars, um, under-collected for state revenues for just that month. All told, uh, we are under-collected by quite a bit. It gives me tremendous pause. I've been on the finance committee for a very long time, I chaired the finance committee, uh, prior, uh, a couple of years ago. And, um, like I said, I am, I am very, very cautious. The, this budget, um, has about, including the, um, EFA, as the governor presented it, has about over four-hundred million dollars in additional for education. You can see one hundred and forty-one million dollars of that is EFA. Um, with the amendment to the EFA bill, oh my gosh, this amendment is, just for K-12 education, not EFA, is over three-hundred million dollars. In, 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 in that money. And honestly, I, you know, I'm kind of right heart, I, I don't see, um, it passing. One of the things in Tennessee is, um, with school vouchers, our rural legislators don't have a lot of options out there. Where are their kids going to use a voucher? Where will they use a voucher? I mean, that's what they all say to us, and that's why they're turning in this into the Christmas tree that they are. And they figure, well, if you're rural legislators, your kids can't use a voucher, at least your, your schools will, will get more funding. Um, and yeah, I mean, it's an argument, and they might end up buying off some people in that way. Um, but when it comes to the finance committee and, and the House, and we're gonna sit there, and don't forget, it's a fight with the Senate, which is always quite a fight, I'm sure. Um, it, it's, it, it's, you know, I just don't know if it's gonna pass. I heard your questions, Representative Boyd, about private schools, and whether or not they would take troubled kids and, and, and kids with issues. And I, you know, I have to tell you, um, I sent, we sent, my husband and I sent our children to MJCA. Um, I, I wanted to raise Christian leaders, you know, my faith is really important to me. And I wanted them to have Christian education every single day. And, uh, my husband said, okay, so we did. And I have to tell you, while our kids were going to MJCA, there were more than a few kids who, um, they weren't there, um, paying, or they, they were little. Um, they were there on scholarship, and, uh, there were, most months I would get a phone call, because I was, I, thank you God, you know, that we were blessed. I paid my tuition at the beginning of the year for my kids, because I got a discount, I got a whole month off, and I was like, I can do that. I like that, that's, that's a, a good deal, that's time to set off, you pay tuition ten months a year. So that's what I did. But month after month after month, I would get a phone call, Miss Lynn, can you help us? We, we've got a kid who can't pay their tuition, we have this, and they would never ask a kid to leave. They, they would never ask a kid to leave. So I, I don't, I don't think that a, a Christian school would kick a kid out, um, for not being able to pay the rest of the tuition. I think they would accept that voucher. So I don't know if that settles the question for you about whether or not a voucher would be accepted by these schools or what, whatever. I think they would probably take these kids, and I have to tell you, um, these kids that we took, um, a lot of them were very troubled, um, very troubled. And, um, the other kids, they really did minister to them, it, it really, we're proud of them, they were ministering to them, and it was a beautiful thing to see. Um, and I know that one, uh, kid in particular who, you know, there's a bunch of them, I, I still know who they are, um, but my kid in particular, Jay Grobe, and today he is a teacher in a public school. And so that's something to be very, very proud of, so. But anyway, let me, um, tell you a little bit about the bill. I, I did watch, I'm not on the education committee, I'm not. Um, I'm on the finance committee and the commerce committee and a few subcommittees and all that. And like Clark said, uh, we are so busy, people come see us. Two groups came to see me last week, one, a charter school group, a group of parents, and they're always there saying, please don't take our charter schools. And why do they come see us? We don't have any charter schools in our county, because they know the legislators in their county won't support charter schools. So they come see us with their kids, and, um, they just ask us, please, you know, support our schools. Another group of kids came to see me last week, and they were from Wilson County, and they were kids who, you know, they, they, um, they really, they, they didn't, I don't think they struggled academically in the school sys, systems, more socially. And so, um, they go now to the Edison School of Madison, and, uh, they love their school, it's a very small school. The, the senior told me she is the valedictorian of her senior class, and she's also the worst-scoring student of her senior class, because there's only one, she's the senior, that's it, one student. Um, but they, they love the school, and, um, they feel like they're getting a good education, so. So anyway, the, um, vouchers, I watched the entire four-plus-hour committee meeting over the weekend, and, uh, like Clark, my husband, that's really powerful too, by me watching the video, when it gets late, but I put in a Bluetooth. And so, um, I do, I, I sit there and, and listen to it on Bluetooth. So anyway, um, under the proposed legislation, the, um, voucher itself will be awarded according to the following priority schedule. Students who are eligible for an education savings account under the current law, so we have education savings accounts, and those are for very low-income, um, students. And, uh, so they will be eligible first, and there is a hierarchy. So if all those students took all the vouchers, that would be an end, that would be it. Um, students in a household at four-hundred percent of the federal poverty level, that is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars annually for a family of four. Students in a household at five-hundred percent or below at the federal poverty level, which would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for a family of four. And then, if there's anything left, students in a household above five-hundred percent of the federal poverty level. They are only available to US citizens, um, they were asked, why would you not be sued about that? Because this program is outside of education, that's the way the governor's office feels. It's outside of education, they don't feel they'd be sued. Um, it would be available for students not enrolled in homeschool or in a homeschool umbrella program. So this excludes homeschool, it excludes, so homeschool schools. Um, with the exception of a category-one school, it would only be available in non-public schools that have been accredited and operational in Tennessee for three years. So if you're a category-one school, you can get it right away. Uh, otherwise, you have to be accredited and operational for three years. So in other words, we can't have a pop-up school. That's one thing that's happening with the states, and, um, they've been, uh, you know, they've not worked out so well. Um, they would not be available to members of the General Assembly or members of the governor's cabinet. Be annually reported by the Department of Education for accountability and utilization via a third-party vendor for students using a scholarship. So, um, that, that's about it, and there was not a lot of conversation in the committee about the details of that, because you, you can, I'm sure you already have five or ten questions. Um, and I was very disappointed that the committee did not have a lot of discussion on that, and, um, I'm sure other committees will. Now, the TISA provisions, um, here is, uh, under the proposed legislation, this is the Christmas tree stuff. Under the proposed legislation, the Tennessee Investment in Student Achievement, TISA, funding formula, would be revised as follows. It would increase the weight for a student in a small district from five percent, um, from five percent, three-hundred and fifty dollars to eight percent, five-hundred and sixty dollars. Add a new category for districts with one-thousand-and-one to seventeen-hundred students by adding two percent weight for those students. It would increase the weight for students in a sparse district from five percent, three-hundred and fifty dollars to six percent, four-hundred and twenty dollars. It would add a seventy-five-dollar-per-student infrastructure fee that will increase local revenue per district approximately seventy-two-point-nine million dollars in year one. And that infrastructure fee, that's, you know, for building schools or maintaining schools. Um, for standardized testing, under the proposed legislation, Tennessee K-12 standardized test will be fewer in number and aligned to the federal requirements. That fewer in number, in the committee, they did discuss reducing it to the fifteen that the federal government requires. Reduce to add approximately three-hundred hours of instructional time back into the classroom, that's what they figured, it could add up to three-hundred time, um, hours of instructional time by reducing that testing. Use the ACT testing to meet federal requirements, so, um, instead of, um, I guess, uh, TCAP, we would use ACT. Um, provide the ACT work keys for technical education seniors beyond the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, protections for public schools, under the proposed legislation, public schools will have the following protections. Students transferring into a public school in the second semester will not be counted against that school's, public school scores. Prevent athletic recruiting by aligning with the current TSTSS double-A policies about athletic transfer eligibility. Dissolving the Achievement School District in twenty-twenty-six. So the Achievement School District, um, really hasn't produced fantastic results, and, um, we would dissolve that, and it would have to be absorbed into their own school district, or someone could come along with a charter, and they could take those students into a chartered school district. Under, um, District LEA Flexibility, under the proposed legislation, Tennessee school districts will be able to allow students in the fourth grade who score below or approaching on their most recent ELA TCAP to retake the written portion of the test. Students who score below or approaching on the retake will be promoted to the next grade, provided the student attends the Learning Loss Bridge Camp the, the summer after such score, and works with a tutor the following school year. They can choose either a traditional one-hundred-and-eighty-day school year, or an equivalent hours-based school year for scheduling their school days. They can submit their district improvement plans every three years instead of annually. They can adopt a chronic absenteeism intervention plan and receive accountability scores based on that plan. They can count high dosage, low ratio tutoring, or RTI squared interventions, and RTI squared requirements to meet state requirements. And one more page. Um, benefits for teachers, under this proposed legislation, teachers will receive benefits such as an option for districts to opt in to the state healthcare plan for an additional fifteen percent state contribution, which is approximately a hundred and sixty million dollars across the state. So that would mean the state would be paying sixty percent of, um, a teacher's health insurance instead of forty-five percent. Um, reduced evaluation frequency for those scoring at or above expectations as follows. One scoring significantly above expectations, um, would be equal to or greater than evaluated every three years. So that would, if a teacher scores high, they will be evaluated every three years. Scoring above expectations, equal to or, um, greater than, will be evaluated every two years. Scoring at expectations will be equal to or, uh, greater than, evaluated every, uh, one year. Scoring below expectations or significantly lower expectations, uh, will be evaluated as based on the current law. Um, we would also extend their teacher licensure, re-certification from five years to every eight years. And adding significant, uh, oh, well, there's, this is a comment, adding significant classroom instruction time and moving away from teaching to the test. So, um, that is the House bill. Last night in session, we, um, had the Senate come in because we elected a new Supreme Court member. And, um, just talking with different senators there, um, I can tell you that the Senate is not in the mood for the House's bill. And, um, the House isn't in the mood for the Senate's bill. So I, I literally, I mean, anybody who thinks, you know, a piece of legislation that the General Assembly is a done deal, you don't know. You don't know what we face and what goes on. Um, it truly is live action, WrestleMania, all the time. So, um, it just really is, I am not kidding, nothing is really a done deal. And everything truly is very, um, you know, just very organic and very, you, you never know what someone's gonna do. Someone, someone even tells you they're gonna vote for your bill when you walk into the committee, and, uh, they go, no. What, what did you do? You know, what did you do? Well, you know, they changed their mind, so, you know, that's, that's just the way it is. But, um, I think Senator Flory and I would love to take your questions, or I will answer your questions.
Thank you all for being here.
And I.
Thank you everyone else, I appreciate you.
Okay, but that's, uh, sorry. Yeah.
Another bottom question?
Oh, and this, this actually is, um, actually, this isn't the one, I thought I said. This is the one, um.
Where is the state funding coming from, and the increase?
Um, well, like I said, our budget is based on budget estimates. And so, uh, the way we do it is we have economists at UT who come up with budget estimates for us. And there's a high, there's always a middle, and there's always a low. And when we create our budget, um, we settle somewhere on one of those numbers. And so, um, literally, if we want more money, we just revise our estimate.
Where's it coming from?
Um, our state tax dollars?
This, this is a large increase.
It is a large increase.
Who, who's funding it? Where's it coming? I know we're funding it somewhere, but federal court is coming from.
We actually have in here where our tax dollar comes from, it's franchise and excise tax, sales tax, tobacco tax, um, motorfield taxes, vehicle, motorfield taxes, insurance, and banking taxes, gross receipts, and privilege taxes, so that's where the money comes from.
That would go up.
Uh, well, it, it's just basically taking a budget estimate, and you could be right or you could be wrong. And that's why the finance committee is so careful, um, because it makes us very nervous that we could be wrong, you know? We could be wrong, I mean, last year, we were wrong, right?
Federal funding is very small, so a lot of state funding either, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So if it's going up that much, gotta come from somewhere.
It could be with the property tax.
Oh, I don't think so, no, absolutely not, no.
We were eager.
No, absolutely not. I think they would take money out of the rainy day fund before they ever did that.
Yeah, do we have a rainy day fund, don't we?
Oh, we do have a rainy day fund, it's very well-funded, we're putting an extra two-hundred million dollars in this year.
That's what I thought, so. So if you're inaccurate on your estimates.
Exactly.
That, that's a cushion.
Exactly, and then, you know, there's more cushions than that too, there's always reversions at the end of the year. So last year, like I said, uh, two-point-four, um, billion dollars of, uh, non-recurring expenses funded with recurring money, that's a cushion. Also, there's reversion, the state departments don't always use all the money that we budget for them, so they turn that back in. And, um, you know, that then becomes money going forward. Um, but as I said, this year, our, um, you know, budget estimates are, we're not, we're not hitting more, not hitting more. It hasn't gotten to the point where the governor has said, okay, we are hard and freeze, we have a spending freeze. Governor Rettison had to do that, I don't know if you remember that. And Governor Rettison also took money from the local governments. Um, I, I voted no on that, but we, we took the local state shared revenue, which really hurt, really hurt. And, uh, I, that has not all been fully restored yet, and we're working our way to do that, working our way.
So now, well, private school students already enrolled in a private school, would they be recipients of the vouchers as well?
Um, well, they could be, but they have to meet the income requirements.
Mm-hmm.
So if, you know, like I talked about at MJCA, if there were some students who do meet those in, income requirements, and maybe they're receiving a program right now at a private school, um, they could apply for a voucher. Will they get it? I, I don't know, I don't know what the distribution will be across the state. Will they concentrate also on areas where maybe the, the grades are very low, the test scores are very low? As well as, uh, you know, uh, the income thresholds? You know, I, I don't know. You know, I, I don't know. When we developed, a couple of years ago, when we did the first voucher bill, which is in place right now, that was only for Memphis. And then we did let Nashville into it. And, and that is because their test scores are so abominable.
I don't even look at you.
So you stated your kids are private school.
They, they did go to, yeah, they went to进去, they graduated. Yeah, and, and you know what? Can I just say this, for anybody listening? I'm so happy that I sent my children to the school that I did. Both of my kids have grown up to have very challenging things happen in their life. My son serves in the military. And he had three guys in his unit commit suicide. Michael was there to minister to those people. And, you know, they, they went on a whole thing with mental health and, and lots of, lots of training, how to identify someone who's gonna commit suicide. He was there to be, you know, a minister to those non-photos. My daughter and her family, she, her husband is severely ill. And he will never get better. And I, I, her faith has been amazing, unbelievably amazing. And it's, it is mental illness. You know, I can't tell you how many people have said to her since he got sick in twenty sixteen, why don't you just divorce him? Why don't you just leave him? And that child's response is, you know, when I married him, I promised in sickness and in health and if the show was on the other side, I'd, no, he'd never do that to me. And that, that truly comes from her faith. And God has blessed her for that and blessing them. Are they rich? No. They, Mr. Lynn and I support a whole other family, believe me, we do. But that's okay. You know what? We're making it, we're making it. And with the children that are loved and they know that they have food on the table and lights are on and that's, they got sunshine outside and they go out and play.
And not to make light of your decisions, sending in a not-for-the-christian. Mr. Lynn and Ms. Lynn can instill those same values within those kids forever.
Oh, yes. And, and we do in our grandchildren, we do in our grandchildren.
My kids have all, I, I have one daughter, she's, she's an attorney up here living. She went to Friendship Christian for a year. She came back to public school after that year, she was behind academically. Uh, she, she loves God, she loves Jesus, she's a lot of faith. She got that from home.
Right.
And, but what she got in private school was behind academically.
And everybody has a different.
But I think it's, it's what you take out of it. What, what do you wanna get out of school? Whether it's public, private, charter, whatever.
Right.
It's what you get out of it.
My, my son, when he took the ACT, he got out of the gate, he got a twenty-seven. I'm very proud of him, but I made him take it three more times. He was, thought I was torturing him, he was so mad at me. Our daughter, out of the gate, got a twenty-five. I made her take it two more times, 'cause that's all I could get out of her. That's all I could get. But, you know, that's, every kid is different. And we know that, we know that, that's what, that's what we do.
Exactly right. My, my youngest son, who I'm surprised he knows how to spell his name, is a great worker. Not the smartest in the world, scored twenty-seven on his ACT. And not to a high school.
That's awesome.
He must took after his daddy. But I'm just saying, this kid never went to college. He's, he's a scorer. Everybody comes from all walks of life.
I agree. And for us, it was a personal decision, you know?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. So now I'm not knocking that at all when I say that, I'm just saying, you're going to get out of experiencing what you wanna get. I slept at high school, I'm just gonna tell you. I swore when I walked out of high school, I'd never go back without feeling high school. And here I've been for the last eight, ten years I've been going in. And I, I get there one.
I would.
But I, you, you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
I just don't think we need to discuss it.
Mrs. Lynn, yes, in regard to that, I support parental choice, period, always have. And, but, yeah, I, I appreciate your standards, your value, if anybody does that, so I, I thank God for that. But do these vouchers also would go to fund something that wouldn't have those values and standards? Say a school who was an atheist, atheistic school or LGBT school? If somebody wouldn't have that, they'd go to fund those schools as well? Would our tax dollars be paid for that?
Technically, it could. I don't know if there are any schools like that. But yes, technically, it could. And that is another huge point of contention among the legislators down there. Let me tell you, it is a huge point of contention. So, yeah, we have, we have those debates ourselves, have those debates ourselves.
Any other questions? Call for questions. Any old business you brought before us? Any new business?
We've got your resolution.
Yeah, we gotta make the motion.
Well, you're gonna have to put the motion up.
I will.
You gotta make the motion?
I will make the motion. We do have a resolution in front of us. And it mirrors the school board, the Board of Educations. And I'm gonna sign it up, I'm gonna be the one to say that, yes, we're in total agreement with my Director of Schools and my Board of Education. Because we don't usually get along. We do. This is you know, that's my motion.
Motion, second, all in favor? Motion to oppose Governor Lee's voucher program?
Y'all, y'all voting on the resolution?
We're voting on the resolution. We've got a motion from Diane, a second from Tyler. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, motion has, as you know.
Can I ask this, Regent, is this will be in the packet for Monday night?
It's already in the packet.
Okay.
It's subject to whatever this committee puts.
Will we be able to get forty-five signatures on this? Can I do that?
Well, we can fix you a place for the signing, whether or not you can get a sign. Yeah, we'll fix it.
Thank you.
All right. Any old business come before this committee? New business?
We'll come back, right?
I need one more motion. We will come back.
The rule we have is wanna make sure Susan Lynn, Senator Poli, and Clark Lloyd, just thank y'all for being here.
Absolutely, we know how this is yours.
You got me out of finance, so thank you.
Oh, so we did you a favor.
You did me a favor. I was like.
I appreciate y'all doing this. I mean, this, I willingness to do more, okay? Not just for this, but this is good for us. I have zero problem, I mean, this is, this is good. I like the dialogue. Y'all, all in favor? Appreciate it.
We still love you.
Hey, we, we do, we thank you both very much, as well as Clark, for taking time out of your calendar.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. Motion?
Okay, so, tell me what the vouchers will do for public schools and private schools?
So what the goal would be in this is the governor wants this money to be following the child. So wherever the child goes, whether it be a public school, private school, a co-op type school, he wants that money available to those parents to have that choice.
Okay, what do you think about using taxpayer dollars for private schools and co-op schools?
So we already do that now. So, I mean, we have the Hope Scholarship, that's of course, public money, Pell Grants and so forth. That's all public money already, and that's already going to private schools.
Well, the, this isn't the one scholarship, the Hope Scholarship, isn't that tied to lottery purchases?
There, there is some money, but we got the Tennessee Promise, that's also tied to that. So, but, but to say that we don't do this already is actually incorrect. So we have a lot of this that's already currently doing that.
Okay, the, recently, at a school board meeting, Larry Tomlinson, one of the school board members, said that you all are not paying attention to your constituents. What's your thought on that?
I totally disagree, 'cause we, I think, all of us as the delegation down there are absolutely listening to our constituents. We all take the, the phone calls, emails, and we're tracking on how many people are pro, pro bills and against bills.
And what, what's that total right now? I mean, how many are for a certain percentage score?
So, right now, there is probably a little bit more against than for, but it is not overwhelming one way or the other.
And what is your thoughts on that? Will you vote for it? Vote for one of the bills?
All right, so right now, you know, we got two bills going. And I like the idea that we're gonna be empowering parents to be making choices. But I wanna do it in such a way that doesn't take away anything from our public schools as well.
So why not put it on a referendum rather than you guys vote for it? And why not put it on a state referendum like you do the judges?
Okay, and that could have happened, okay? Just nobody, this is the first time I've even heard that, okay? So this is, you're, you're sharing something right now. But it's, at this point, would be too late in this to even do an amendment or anything else on this. I mean, this is what's in front of us.
What's the great feeling on the Hill? Is it pro, against? I mean, I've heard mainly pro from the Republicans, against from the Democrats.
No, it is across the board. But it is the governor's piece of legislation. And this is his, if I had to say, his number-one piece of legislation that he wants to get done this year. So there is a huge push by the administration to get this through one way or the other.
Larry Thomas said at the meeting the other day that you three, four, four, are not representing the constituents. What's your thoughts on that?
Oh, no, we, we are representing the constituents. You know, they have to remember, we represent the whole county, everybody. Not, you know, not just the school system, not just the elected officials on the county commission. It's funny how many times people will call me and they'll say, I never see you at a school board meeting. And I'm like, that's 'cause I'm not in charge of the school board. They are their own elected body. And they are elected by their people to make decisions. But they work for the people, I work for the people. So, yeah, I, I did see that he said that, but, you know, we all still love each other. It's okay. You never take offense.
When, when do we think this bill might make it to another committee?
Right, um, I am not sure. I don't know where it is this week. I did watch the full four-hour, four-and-a-half-hour meeting last week. I'm not sure where it is this week. I don't know, I would have to look at the schedule. I'm just not on the committee, so, you know, I, if I wanna see where the bill is, I, I literally have to look it up. Basically, we serve on committees as subject matter.
You concentrate on what's subject matter.
I loosely word, use the word experts. Loosely. But we serve on committees by subject. And those are the bills that we read and study and we concentrate on. And, you know, members call us and tell us about their bill, or we call them if they haven't called us by the time committee comes and says, tell me about your bill. I don't understand this or that. Because when you're just reading language, you don't understand the story behind it. It's really important to understand the story behind a bill. Why have you filed this bill? Why is this a problem? What are you trying to solve? And there's always a human story behind the bill. And those human stories are, are, are great to listen to. And what we have to decide is, is this sort of a, a one-off, an outlier? It's a human story that is very remote, it's not gonna happen all the time. So do we really need to create a whole law because of this one unusual situation? Or is this human story indicative of what happens to most people? And yes, in that case, we need to act. So that, that's what we tried to figure out as best we can. And that's why we listen to constituents, we read their emails. I call constituents on the weekend, you know, I call bankers. You know, I, I call all kinds of people on the weekend and say, I, I call the surveyor. And, because we had a bill on surveying today. And just say, okay, here's what the bill does. In practice, how do you feel that would work? And they let me know their opinion, and their opinion is very valuable.
Okay, now, what, you said that you represent all the constituents. What is the percentage, if you, if you have one, of yea versus nay on this? I mean, are there more?
Oh, I have no idea. But most of Tennessee is extremely rural. So, you know, I, I would say that's why they've hung the Christmas tree ornaments on this bill like they have.
You're the chairman of the committee, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, what did you think of tonight? I mean, do you think it brought any new information out?
I thought we had a lot of good conversation, a lot of good open conversation about it. I think the Wilson County Commission has made a statement here that we, we don't need vouchers in our county. I think we also got the point across that vouchers are not on a, on a level playing field, that not every school has to take them. And as a public school, we are required to take every standard and teach every standard. And until we're to that point, I, I cannot ever go along with the vouchers.
So what did you think of tonight's meeting?
Well, I think that our, you know, our school board passed a resolution unanimous. Our county commission out of ad hoc and out of education committee will hit the floor for them to vote on it. And I think that's the way democracies should work, that the people should speak. And, and, and great to see the dialogue tonight between the representatives, thank them for being here. And, and we'll just have to see where this process goes.
Is there any information that came out tonight that is new to you?
No, not really, I'm watching that bill daily, and so, no, I am standing up on it.